Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh four. I like to call this meeting to order. Councilman Ferguson, this meeting is being recorded. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Ferguson, could you do the application, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is John. And we thank you for keeping us. Uh, how we ask this matter to be moved out of the Capitol and to the Congress. The action to do those that on their way. This is a, and the name.
Adam Clark, she's roll call, please.
Good evening. Councilwoman Fareed is not, let us know that she was not going to be able to join us this evening. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yeah.
Good evening. She's here. Uh, Councilman Hairston?
Yeah.
Is also online. Councilman Herring?
Here.
I apologize for that. Councilman Herring is here. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
Uh, Council President Ferguson, here. We have an order. They're both to adopt their agenda. A move can involve telling you about your agenda. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Counselor, yes.
Uh, see, on certain agenda, we have reports, this being a special regular meeting. The reports for the city. Wait until January, is it?
Oh.
The reason for the points. Because I'm sure that, um. Some. Some of the people are probably not, I think they're in February to report because she's not probably there. Considering that this almost closed for a week. Due to the illness and then, um, he's working on it and also working on the grant. Yearly, uh, all right, thank you. Slipped my mind for some reason. The yearly audit. So, um. Can we hold on to the reports until? Uh, the next work session after we've seen the reports and had an opportunity to, uh, read them and then I have a discussion with the proper, um, department heads and then they can discuss them in the next regular meeting?
Any objections, students?
I agree. Uh, you can tell me Jones on that.
All right.
Also, um, the order for commercial vehicle parking restrictions, um, I'm not over there. You go ahead and make it.
I just want to get that off. Okay. Any other? Okay. Any other comments? All right, so the adjustments are, um. Well, what I just accidentally mentioned, is anything interesting in the report that we can know? No, okay. All right, so the adjustments are we're removing the administrative reports. And we're tabling the ordinance, uh, for commercial vehicle parking until January. Any other discussion? All right. With that, Counselor.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
You have a view, you have a view, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Sorry.
I said I didn't listen, you know?
I said yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
And President Curtis?
Yes.
Both.
All right, thank you. All right, well, first up on the agenda, uh, are the minutes. Uh, at this back, the minutes from our folder. Uh, we presented this at the November. Um, work session, uh, which is in the middle of it at the regular session in November. So we're going in here. Uh, and I'm hoping that we have that. These minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, matter of course.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston? Councilman Hairston?
I'm moving on.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Hairston?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I said, yeah, okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, what? We have the Councilwoman Guillaume, thank you. All right, well. Next up is legislation, uh, R eighteen dash twenty-three. A resolution to draft and award a contract to RH Elario's. Landscaping Inc. for snow and ice control. Is there a motion to the board or vote?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes. So, this is not the person we had before.
Correct.
So, has this person been also vetted and also, um, know about the salt? That they've asked for some supply salt and all that?
Yes, I spoke to him several times, sending an email. People more with everything and once, if he's awarded the contract, um, you know, he would need with me in regular public work. In reference to the salt.
Okay.
Any other question? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, matter of course.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yeah.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote seven zero.
Okay, next. Six zero. Six zero, I'm sorry. Next up is. R eighteen dash twenty-three, a resolution to award a contract to Phil Production LLC for video technology broadcast and post-production services. Is there a motion to the board or vote? Some move. Uh, second? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, matter of course.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yeah.
Councilman Herring?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries the clear.
All right. Last piece of legislation. Is. An emergency ordinance to re-appropriate funds for existing year twenty twenty-three, vote to override mayor's veto. Uh, if someone can confirm, do we also bring it forth? As an emergency ordinance or just because, or just regular now that we, uh, have already voted?
We've already voted, we just have to vote now to override the veto.
Okay, so is that a motion? Uh, is there a vote or some move? Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, matter of course. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Hairston?
Yeah.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
And President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries six zero.
Thank you, or that, uh, ordinance, yes. And that. Moving on to the next one, uh, since we removed reports. Next up is citizens' comment. Uh, citizens. If you would like to speak, uh. Online or, um. In person, if you're a person, if you are online, uh, please either raise your virtual hand, uh, and I will call you. Or, uh. You can type in the chat and I'll call you.
The chat is the same.
Oh, the chat is the same. Uh, you can. Open your mic and then I'll, uh, call you. With that, I recognize Mr. Powell, uh, now. Uh, it's, uh, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
Really, really. Good evening. Uh, my name is Anthony Powell. Now living in Fort Moni. I have a question for Councilman Herring. Uh, councilman, uh, the city of Simpleson has around four thousand five hundred residents. They have a random municipal center and a police station where Addis, or, and a police station that is separate from municipal center where Addis Manola are compacting every day on the bus. Upstate Creighton is sitting with a population of around six thousand four hundred. Doesn't have a new municipal center and a police section that is separate from the municipal center.
You're asking me why?
Why, yes.
Just because it's out of contract with some company to sell, um. Software programs to different municipalities and they got a cash advance upfront. And then, and then I sell them. So. They can do it. They got, they came up and tried to sell out the program that they wanted, hundred thousand dollars or something like that per year from these municipality and we didn't, we didn't take advantage of it, but they got a cash advance upfront for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, I recognize, uh, Mr. Mario Frost. Mr. Frost, yeah. Three minutes?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mario Frost. Out of Ward three, I've got a couple of questions. Um, what constitutes an emergency? I'm looking at the, um, current corrupt economy's emergency on Oregon and it's moving the, um, budget over from the mayor's budget, uh, hiking around at thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four and moving it over to special events, um, support prison and staff bonus pool. And I'm trying to see how that counts as a emergency. And it sounds like that would have been, um, something that would have been planned out throughout the year over the budget of the council and the budget of the, um, administration, which they need the city manager on, um, doing a staff bonus pool and special events, the, they're not really counted as an emergency because it's a special event, it's an event. It's not going to be something that's, uh, a little bit bigger than like a snow removal or things like that, you know, a consequence of emergency. And also, um, the mayor having a veto and the council just votes, uh, again, to override the veto. What the purpose of the mayor having the veto is, that the council automatically, if they voted for it, you know, after the veto, they vote for it again. So it seems like the mayor does not have a voice on any ordinance because no matter what it is, it's the council's decision on all ordinance. Thank you.
Those are your two questions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, so, uh, except that, and you know. Your last one first, um, and I'm proud, it allows. It allows one council to override the veto, similar to on the national page. If two thirds of Congress disagrees with the President of the United States, they can override the veto on the President of the United States because, you know. Should, that should's how the balance is how it goes. So if President Biden wants to veto or assert that piece of legislation that came through, uh, Congress, uh, but you had a majority of Congress who represented five people to say, oh, no, it's a good piece of legislation. Well, it goes through. Uh, it's, it's a word about, in the same way as in our party, that the council can override the veto. If a majority of the council members think that without piece of legislation is what for, uh, is sort of the city, the people or, uh, see it's the right piece of legislation to vote for, then the council, uh, by super majority, as you see in this regular report, almost like any other piece of legislation, by super majority, can override their veto. So that's for your second question. For your first question, uh, if that you put that as well, well. The piece of legislation was provided to our lawyer for, um, to establish an emergency, uh, to make sure, to ensure that we could bring it forward as an emergency. Uh, part of those funds are going to feed families for Thanksgiving. Uh, things, as you probably know, in budget season, say different things comes up. So, uh, it required, uh, a organization and now in this case, the government to, um, to shift, to be flexible. And because there were hungry families identifying that could be fed, uh, and I believe it was, it came in probably like two days before, um, um, Thanksgiving, or I don't know, we call Thanksgiving, I don't know. Uh, that constitutes as an emergency. And so, uh, with efficiency, who had to put that forth as an emergency?
So the funds were spent before and you guys just voted just now, but the council just voted it, you know, after, after the, on the mayor veto?
No, sir. So what, what we did is, uh, we spoke with the acting city manager who agreed that it was important to help families feed, uh, help feed families for Thanksgiving. I don't know, I don't. With the feedback is, but, uh, and so. If you can put it on. No. Awesome. Okay. I'm sorry. I don't know where the feedback's coming from. Uh, and so, uh, this case was, uh, very difficult to allow us to use a fund. Uh, or he used the funds to finance the, um. Uh, the, to, uh. I forgot who's the, then to.
Science.
Well, to the, uh, organization that was helping the family. Uh, and so this is just to put the money back into, uh, initiative. Thank you for that. Now. All right, I'm sorry. Uh, what's your name, sir?
Eric Jenkins. Uh, all right, Mr. Eric Jenkins, if you can come here. Everyone.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jenkins? I know I'm a resident issue fifteen point two district, uh, one away from my house, uh, the regional house of this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I have a. A compliment and a question. Compliment is to the, uh, border department, public works and, uh, code, I have a social form model officially, they handle it well. You know, a lot of, because I'm tired of the problem and I know a lot of times you get a lot of complaints, you said a lot of compliments, so. Border department just came out there, they handled it very professionally. Uh, not a problem, they, they, they want to explain to you again, public works came out. They had a, uh, real professional, he did a good job cleaning the whole side of, uh, this, you know, because in front of my house, it's nothing but woods and then he getting perfect job. And code enforcement explained situation. So they, they had a whole label around again, but I'm just giving them a quick. You know, uh, compliment that they all, all three departments did well, well. The second issue is solicitors. And one in with solicitor last Saturday, he was trying to sell big siding windows. No ID, just a name on his shirt. And he said he was doing roofing. I said, no, I'm good. I don't need no roof. I'm all right. What about windows? No windows, fine, so, you know. You don't have to be brutal. First of all, you know, my property, tell me what on that hill, you know, my property. It was down from a neighbor's house. See, they're eighty years old, they're by themselves, doesn't sound good. So I turned and called the company, company's basically Pennsylvania. He got in contact with the guy and he said, well, you know, he fired him. I said, well, I don't have nothing to do that. What you need to do is if you have people coming out, meaning this is not just the first time, you get a lot of solicitors come. No ID, it's just clipboard selling windows, uh, roofing, stuff like that. And you have a lot of elderly and then, you know, they can pray on the elderly. So I don't know if something, let's say license or something they have because when I watched them, it was like five of them, they all parked on ground parkway, then it went to millions to try to, I don't know, sell roofs and, you know, windows and stuff like that. It's not only that, it's like internet, uh, you need to want to cut your grass or paintings and they're just no ID and, you know, you don't know what they are. So basically, you know, maybe you can do something about that, I don't know, but other than that, that's it. And, uh, the, uh, turkey giveaway though is pretty much, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, may I address the solicitation? Uh, Councilman Jones, as far as solicitation, there is, and I don't, I can't. I had, you know, I would have committed, I don't have a charter with me. But in the charter, it does speak about solicitors and I think they have to go to the police department and get, um, permission to go through the city and solicit. I don't, I, I'm not sure in the charter words, I think it might say that there is no solicitation or they have to go to the police department. But they, we, we, we have been, uh, in flux with a lot of solicitors. You know, they'll walk around selling them, walk up on your property. I've had them walk up on my property, you know, and, you know, have showed the, you know, companies, my ring footage to let them know, I'm not telling you a tale, this is what's happening. So, but as far as solicitation is concerned, they do have to come to the police department, I think, to identify themselves and let the city know that they're in the city, but I don't think that they do that now. But if, if, I think now that, uh, with the solicitor, if you see him, you can call the police department and have a police officer. Once we find out what the charter actually says, because I'm sure all of us up here are probably going to look for that. Then we can get the police department to, uh, agree that when somebody calls about solicitors, that an officer will come or code enforcement will come and tell them that they will have to get permission or have to show, you know, who they are to, um. It's just like with using anything else in the city, let us know who you are and what you want. And then maybe, we, maybe, maybe we need to go through the charter and set it up where is, when they do come, uh, okay, you can come on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but we don't want to see your company in our city, uh, any other days. But solicitors are, uh, actively, both with certain protocol to, uh, come to the city of Glen Arden.
Yes, just add on to that, um, first of all, Mr. Jenkins, thank you, sir. I appreciate, um, the comments, the reference to the police department, code enforcement, department, public works, um, and you also brought up a good point in the last newsletter, um. I sent out information of records and scams, um, especially in reference to the elderly, um. As Ms. Jones was saying, we do have, um, a charter in reference to that. So basically, if somebody wants to solicit in the city, they have to come to the city manager, fill the application, it's basically a contract. And then we give them permission, um, to do that. But that's, of course, people want to do that. So, um.
Right, right.
My advice to the community is, um, like Councilmember Jones stated earlier, you call police and, uh, we come on the scene and then, um, we will call code enforcement so we can write a citation, a reference to that.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Ben Cross?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging the turkey giveaway. For our, everyone, we did feed three hundred and fifty-nine citizens and other, I don't know if you know this, but we fed thirty bellies after that. So we literally almost gave away four hundred meals completely for, uh, Thanksgiving. That was for twenty-second of November and the twenty-ninth of November. So thank you for that acknowledgement.
My fault, my fault.
Any other citizens' comments?
Hearing none? Um.
Yeah, um, Ms. President, yeah, I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday and I hope you have an enjoyable holiday season.
All right. So. With that, all right, so, um. The open part of the, um. Hearing none, there is no. Okay, so. Um, so it's council, I mean.
Oh.
All right, so, uh, pursuant to an anticoat of Maryland's state government article, section ten, by the way. A, the council by majority vote, they retire to the vector of court session at any time during this meeting. Uh, should the council retire to the session or court session, the chair will announce the reasons and a report will be issued that are contributing to the closing reasons for such court session. And this court session is to discuss personnel, uh, issue.
Uh, Council President?
Related to. Ballers, this, thank you. Um, is there a motion to pause this open session?
I move.
Second, second, any discussion? Hearing none? Hearing none, matter of course. So, Councilwoman Guillaume? All right. Councilman Hairston? Councilwoman Guillaume? Councilman Hairston? Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes. With.
I said yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. With that, it's enough folks to close this session. By most attended, thank you for attending, wish you a happy Christmas. Uh, the. Business party. Christmas party. There's a Christmas party on Saturday, December the seventeenth. Uh, seven PM, two thousand seven PM, so it's adults only, so bring your dancing shoes. Uh... Is there... In the, in the goal. Uh, we have, uh, as a council, uh, had a consensus to be in recess until January the ninth, is that right, councilman?
Yeah.
January the ninth, so enjoy your holidays, merry Christmas, happy New Year, enjoy the family. The open session is now.